Stand for the flag of allegiance. Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
2017-18 MEF Grant Awards.
So, once again, we have the members of the Marlborough Education Foundation here to award this year's grant recipients. And I believe that, I think one of the, one of the awardees, somebody's not here because they're doing teacher conferences, I think, so. But, and Val Cowan, the president, is here to make the presentations.
Thank you. So, we awarded three grants this year totaling around $4,500. And they're, they're really interesting grants. So, the first one goes to Kelly Hall and Whitcomb School, $1,820 to purchase iPad minis and accessories for Kelly's iPads for engineering project. These iPads will allow her students to document the engineering design process using videos and photos by capturing events over time and analyze the results. Do you want to, Kelly, can you come up and grab your grant?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. And then to Danielle Martin and Erin Casey also at Whitcomb, they're not here tonight because they're at teacher conferences. But we granted $519.80 for hokey stools for their sixth grade team to provide more fidget-friendly options for their choose-a-space learning time. These seats are very effective with children with ADHD because the physicality of the stools kind of drains off energy from these children and allows them to focus and to concentrate more on their studies. So, I'll drop this off at Whitcomb tomorrow for Danielle and Erin. And then to Susan Rosenthal in Richer School. Susan, come on up. We are granting $2,178 for the purchase of therapy ball chairs and standing desks to help decrease the hyperactivity level of students with ADHD, to aid their concentration and focus levels, and provide a calmer learning environment for students. And Susan actually got a grant last year to purchase therapy ball chairs for, was it the third and fourth?
They were larger ones, so they fit more with the third and fourth graders.
So, she's expanding the therapy ball chairs to the lower grades, to the K through two levels, and also getting some standing desks, which also have been proven to help students with, with hyperactivity. It's, it's shown that when students are able to stand up during the day, that it increases their concentration levels. So, we're really happy to help you with that, Susan.
Thank you so much.
Our pleasure.
Thank you so much.
So, those are the grants for this year. And actually, when we tallied everything up, we've given over $193,000 to teachers since 1997. We, this was our 20th year, and we hope to continue to be able to do that with support from the community. So, we want to thank everybody who supports our different fundraisers. Right now, we're running the Thank an Educator. If you, if you want to thank any of your teachers for their contributions to their children, instead of buying them a little trinket, you can, you can send us a donation, and we will give them a certificate that lists all the families who are, who are honoring them. And then, we're also, we have our March Madness pool in March, and we're in the process of deciding if we're going to reinstate Mystery Night, which may be coming up in February, which is a fun night out. So, look for our activities and please support us. Yes.
Road race?
I'm sorry, what, Michelle?
Road race.
Oh, and the road race. Actually, we're doing it, thank you, we're doing it the last Sunday in April this year, and you'll be getting information about that really soon. We hope some people put some teams together and come participate in our road race. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Question, Ms. Hennessy.
Question. So, I'm assuming that sometime you guys might be looking for more people to help you all at MEF, right?
Always.
And so, how would people in the community that might be interested in trying to get involved to help you all, since you guys are there for all of the teachers? How might people in the community get involved?
The easiest way is to go to our website, which is www.mefonline.org, and it lists our phone numbers and our emails. And the easiest way for somebody to get involved would be to call us and say, "I want to help." And we will, any of us, myself, Mike Brossie, the treasurer, Sue Pearl, our clerk, and Ayako, any of us can bring you to a meeting and get you on board to helping us out.
And I'm assuming that there are a lot of different levels and areas where you guys could use help, whether it's a couple hours or much more. It would be greatly appreciated and probably would really have a big impact on the community, right?
Oh, yes, it would. Well, I mean, as, as far as-
Like your advertisement right now.
I was just going to say, I nominate Kathryn Hennessy as the new membership coordinator.
Well, what's interesting about MEF is we really only have three meetings plus our grant meeting a year, so this isn't like a lot of organizations that have monthly meetings.
Right.
And for every dollar that we put into the school system, it impacts numerous students. It impacts students over grade levels. It impacts students for years. So, as far as putting money into the school system, MEF is probably the biggest bang for your buck that, that you can get to help the school system. It's not a scholarship just to one student. Our grants have, just have, impact hundreds of students. And we, it's, we're really not a huge time consumer. We have our fundraisers kind of down, down in that we've been running them for a number of years, so we're, we're very efficient with the amount of time we need to run them. And it's not a lot of volunteer hours for the, the impact that every dollar that we raise and goes into the school system gives.
And that's, I guess, why I was trying to get you to say all that, because you all could use assistance, and it's always good to have more people join and help out and/or bring potentially new ideas-
Yes.
-to you all. And it's not something where it has to be a massive commitment of time. It can be done on a shorter amount of timeframe. And I guess that there's a lot of people out there, whether they're currently involved, maybe in PTOs, or not even involved, and this would be a great way of folks trying to join you all and, and get involved, because you guys do great work. And thanks for the nomination. You know, you know I'm overextended already, anyway, but that's why I really wanted to make sure that this was a forum to be able to talk to people that do care about the school system and do care about making sure that everyone has stuff. So, thank you for all you do.
Oh, thank you, Kathryn.
I want to just, I want to add one, one thing for those of you who are listening that may not really understand what MEF is. Basically, it's just a group of volunteers. We raise money and make grants available to teachers or staff people in the entire district. So, any employee of the district can apply for grant funds. And really, we're trying, what MEF is set up to do is to affect the largest number of kids possible. And I want to just piggyback that by just mentioning that two of the grants that we, you know, funded tonight are for seating-type equipment for students. And although, really, the target population that I think the grant writers were thinking of were kids that might not be able to utilize traditional seating patterns as effectively in their learning process, I really see it as, as like an MTSS Tier One. I mean, basically, what we're trying to do is set up classrooms to be optimal learning environments for all students. And some days we're on, some days we're not. Some days, even for a traditional student, we may have a fidgety day, and having a standing desk or some of these other seating arrangements, I think, really is setting up a more optimal learning environment for all students, not just the ones that were identified in the grant. So, I wanted to add that for the committee's edification.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Devo.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to let you know of one of our grant opportunities. I've spoken about this before. It's the LaSalle College Diversity Pipeline Project, and it's an ongoing partnership we have with LaSalle. Hopefully, some of our students will go to LaSalle and become education majors and come back to Marlborough Public Schools. Essentially, this is looking to increase the pipeline of diversity of minority students in Massachusetts. So, just recently, six Marlborough High students visited the campus. They met with college student mentors, and this is part of this grant-funded partnership, as I said, to increase diversity in the educational field. We're really lucky, we're one of just a few districts that are partnering with LaSalle on this project. Lots of things going on in the frameworks world at the Department of Education. The Board of Elementary and Secondary Ed approved recently the highlights of the proposed History and Social Science Framework revisions. This has been a long time coming, as you know. The complete draft will be available in January. After public comment, the Board will vote on the framework sometime in June, sometime in June. I watched the Board meeting where, the video of it, where they rolled out some of the highlights. It looks as though there's going to be a greater emphasis on civics with a proposed eighth-grade civics course, as well as opportunities for students to investigate, analyze, evaluate, and deepen the understanding. There's a shift in history education away from rote recall to a more deep understanding of the connections to history and to literacy and to trends and themes. I might add that the emphasis on civics is something we've started at the high school, certainly, I think moving it to eighth grade is a great move. We've been working with the city clerk's office to focus on some local governmental municipal opportunities for students, why not? We're, you know, we're right here in Marlborough with municipal government, and Lisa Thomas is great to work with. So, the way this is going to roll out is the 1819 school year will be a preparation for any changes to program of studies, and then the new changes will start up in 19, 2019, 2020. Next up on the docket are revisions for the arts standards, again, sorely needed, and the health and PE standards, as well as word language. We have not seen any movement in these standards, some of them since the, the early to late 90s, so it's time for a revision. I like to keep you posted on some of our special populations, and here's some data as of the beginning of December till last week. We had received a total of 32 new McKinnevento students. Seven of these students are from Puerto Rico, four from the U.S. Virgin Islands, and one from Florida due to the hurricane. There is a grant that DESI has put out for districts that have more than 50 Puerto Rican students who come into, and we certainly are not even approaching that, but some of the bigger cities, Worcester, New Bedford, certainly Boston, are hopefully going to benefit from this grant. Also, there are waivers that are being talked about for teachers from Puerto Rico who may not have their paperwork available now due to extenuating circumstances, but certainly could be used in the school districts. I'm talking about the larger districts. And I just read today that there is also, some of the superintendents are asking that charter schools, even though they've reached their quota, perhaps would take in some of these students and admit them. It's not compelling, but that they offer admission, perhaps, to some who seek, and I certainly do support that. It is the evening of awards, so I did want to tell you about the Brigham Family Trust Grant Awards that were recently given. Rena Rego is not here tonight, but she sits on that board, and the award ceremony was held last week at the Senior Center. So, we're pleased that two of the grants to benefit the Marlborough Public Schools were awarded funding. In the Richer Elementary School, they received a grant to continue the Read to a Child Lunchtime Reading Program, which engages 77 volunteer mentors from six area companies to read to 63 high-need students in grades one through four at Richer. The mission of Read to a Child is to increase children's success in reading and in life by inspiring adults to read to a child regularly. The total for this grant is $4,500. And the Whitcomb School received a grant in the amount of $2,625 to help fund the costs associated with the Whitcomb School VEX Robotics Teams. The teams consist of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, approximately 30 members, who meet bi-weekly after school to design program and practice for monthly competitions held throughout Central Mass. The goal of the program is to help students integrate problem-solving, cooperation, and teamwork to accomplish the goal of designing a workable robot. And we have some recent success to report. At a recent VEX Robotics Competition, the Whitcomb Panther Claws won the championship with two other Alliance teams, and they're now qualified for the regional championships, which occur in February. And you'll recall, from time to time, we have a demonstration, so hopefully, we will have more success and will bring some of the robots to you. This evening, since there is only one meeting in December, and we normally try to spread out the reports of the assistant superintendents and the Director of Student Services, we decided rather than to throw off the cycle, we have a report from both Mary Murphy and Michael Bergeron. Michael Bergeron is not here this evening, but if you have questions, we could perhaps try to answer them or forward to him for the January meeting. And you'll also recall that our goal is to have Jody O'Brien, the Director of Student Services, report out four times to you, and this is two of four this evening. So, I just wanted to give some context to those reports. And I'm happy to entertain questions.
I just have a question. On the grant to Richer School for the Read to a Child for $4,500, what would they be using that money for, since they're-
Books, perhaps? Or, I was wondering that myself. Mary, do we know books?
So, Read to the, to a Child is a national organization. We met with them, we've been discussing rolling it out to other schools. But there's also a site-based coordinator from the organization that comes on to site, the site, and works with organizing the books, making sure the volunteers are arranged, recruits volunteers from local companies. So, I think most of that money, if not all of it, goes to that organization.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? CNN, Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Good evening. The administrative dinner meeting, we, this takes place four times a year, and on Tuesday, December 5th, all district administrators and some members of the Joint Evaluation Committee attended an administrative dinner meeting titled, "Effective Feedback is the Heart of Great Instructional Leaders." This was the second workshop dedicated to the book, "Thanks for the Feedback." Giving effective feedback is a goal of all evaluators this year. Last spring, the Joint Evaluation Committee compiled baseline data through our district-wide survey, and this book study and professional development are actions we have taken in response to that data. The Title I Gaze Conference, Margreene Gruelick, Mary Murphy, Ron Sanborn, Lynn Medallu, Audrey McNichol, and Anne McGowan attended the Title I Case Conference, November 29th to December 1st. Throughout the conference, the team was able to attend seminars ranging from evidence-based practices in literacy and math to presentations from staff from the Department of Education. A series of keynote addresses focused on family involvement, collaboration, collaborative leadership, blended learning, and the shift from teachers designing curriculum to focusing on instructing and in supporting the instructional needs of all students. During the conference, Lynn Medallu, Ron Sanborn, and Superintendent Gruelick, all wanted materials that will benefit the district. We were at a winning table.
Yes, we were.
We surveys and instructional practice review. As you may remember, Dr. Daggett was the keynote speaker on opening day. During the morning, Dr. Daggett surveyed staff in an attempt to identify what actions we would take to address our achievement gap. Responses identified an instructional practice review and collecting data through the We surveys. Since that time, we have been consulting with Dr. Daggett and ICLE to develop a short-term and a long-term plan. On December 5th, all instructional staff in grades K-12 participated in the We Teach surveys during their scheduled staff meetings. We Teach surveys will be given to students in grades three to 12 over the next two weeks. Additionally, in January, and the dates were just confirmed this afternoon, the week of January 8th, a representative from ICLE will be visiting the schools and completing an instructional practices review. Once the review has been completed, the data will be compiled in one report, and a representative from ICLE will debrief with the leadership team, and we will be working on identifying our next action steps from that report. So, we wanted to make sure that everyone was clear that a keynote address, the address in the beginning of the year, was not a one-shot deal. It was an action that we are taking to continually focus on instructional practices and to use data in order to improve. Thank you.
Questions from the committee? CNN, you're going to do the finding and truth report?
That would be interesting, wouldn't it?
Let's go.
So, I want to thank Mr. Bergeron for putting together the report. It was very important for him to look at item number one, which revolves around student activity reports or student activity accounts. This is based on some of the recent news we're hearing from Boston Public Schools in the IRS audit. Certainly, we want to make sure that we're not in any kind of situation such as that, and steps have been implemented for over three years to make sure that our books are all in order. I will summarize the accounts, and office staff and coordinators have been trained from the Abrahams Group, a leader in municipal accounting and auditing. All three elementary student activity accounts were closed and successfully operated from city-owned and operated gift accounts for two full years now. A guideline and procedure manual was created, audited all accounts by an outside company, Roselli Clark and Associates, and we've deposited all funds under the control and protection of the city comptroller. In conjunction with the city comptroller and city auditor, the district is now able to use the warrant process for all student activity payments. It's, and it's absolutely wonderful insurance policy for us, that many different eyes, including principal, grants and accounts payable manager, assistant superintendent for finance and operations, school committee, and city auditor's office all get a look at the books for checks and balances. Checks are cut from the city treasury, all tax, city treasurer. All tax forms, including 1099 forms, are automatically generated. We appreciate, of course, the assistance and diligence of the city offices in helping make sure that we have a viable and a system that is full of checks and balances and absolute integrity. The district has also taken significant steps to secure our accounts, prevent salary payments from these accounts, and provide the highest level of protection from fraud or abuse. As we fully implement this process, it does indeed slow down reimbursements, but it is a price we're willing to pay as we move forward. And, of course, Mr. Bergeron apologizes for his absence this evening. I will apologize on his behalf. He's taking a well-deserved vacation. He did submit a transfer request. Normally, he would not do that, but the transfer request is by way of backing up the report you're about to hear and some of the comments from Jody O'Brien, who's going to describe more in detail the reason for these transfers.
Any questions? Just a note on the, the issue that Mr. Bergeron brings up with, you know, the Boston school system. Okay. You didn't need to turn it up that high. I think we started this process a few years ago when Susan Baton was here, and she realized that-
Yep.
...we had a mess in those activity accounts and really get into it, and it's great to hear we have all the safeguards in place now-
We do.
...so we don't run into this, so.
No, we appreciate it.
Congratulations to all of you for doing that. Ms. Matthews?
I did have a conversation with Mr. Bergeron at our last meeting prior to, regarding this, because if you looked on the warrant, there's a new line item reflective of this. And while he did apologize about slowing down reimbursements, it's, more importantly, it's requiring people not to plan-
That's right.
-more, you know-
Proactively.
Proactively.
Yes.
And so, the student-run organizations with their advisors have to really think about what they want to do with enough time, enough lead time, because this is the way it should be done, and can take advantage of our discounts that are available through our vendors and so on, and not paying tax on things, where sometimes some of the kids go out and do it on their own and not realize that they have a better deal, so.
Thank you.
We did start a process with reimbursements, that we don't reimburse taxes?
Yes, correct.
Because, so, that got a lot of people on board in doing the right thing.
Yes, no, it is.
So. Any other questions? CNN, Director of Student Services.
Good evening. Back in September, I had, whoops, I'm a little shorter. I had reported to you how excited we were about the very strong team that we were able to put together this summer in, in regards to the educational team leaders and the restructuring that we had done with the team chairs. And we all got down to work in September, everybody working with building principals and the staff within the schools, getting to know the teachers, the kids, the families. And as we got going, the structure that I had reported to you in September presented some challenges, and I had summarized those and reported to you. And so, some of the things that happened were, at the Richer Elementary School, there was a shift in busing with the neighborhoods, and that presented with an unexpected shift of special education caseload from Jarwick to Richer Elementary School. So, originally, we had about 110 students, special education students at Jarwick, and 60 students at Richer Elementary. So, originally, we had anticipated a part-time educational team leader position at Richer, and that's what we started out with. Also, we had two and a half educational team leaders for supporting Whitcomb's Middle School. That number was sufficient to be able to manage the IP team meetings. That was part of the responsibilities of team chairs historically before we switched to admin positions. However, that amount of personnel support is not sufficient to be able to have that position provide any type of administrative support in regards to really getting out there into the classrooms to do observations. They are all responsible for supervising and evaluating for special education staff. However, the expectation moving forward was that I was going to be able to, in the district, was going to be able to have special education administrative experts within the buildings, to be able to really go into the classrooms above and beyond the, the staff that they were evaluating, be able to do observations, and then be able to work with Mr. Fletcher, myself, the building principals and administration, on coming up with recommendations on what needed to change. And we all know that there are things that need to change regarding the rigor relevance, the programs and services and delivery of what we're doing for our special education Also, given the small number of special education students at the Hildreth School, originally, we had proposed to have an education, part-time educational team leader support the director at Hildreth School in providing the special education supports as far as running the team meetings and providing the administrative support around the special education aspect of the alternative program. However, the director of the Hildreth School, that is a dual license. It is a license for special education administrator plus a director license. And now, knowing what I know from, you know, my first, what, is it six months already? Wow. You know, there isn't any reason or rationale to have an additional administrator at Hildreth, so my recommendation would be moving forward to work towards having the responsibility of the director of Hildreth be responsible for those educational team, team leader activities at, at the building, and not having an educational team leader also be assigned there. So, we all received the results of our state, from the state regarding our student achievement that was reviewed with the school committee. And based on that, it's, the districts, as, as district leaders, we really feel that's imperative that we have educational team leaders that are able to provide assistance to the principals and other administrators on, as I said, a significant amount of supervision and evaluation of the instruction and oversight of the programs and services of our special education students. And we're looking for those ETLs who have the expertise on providing consultation, recommendations, and- and overseeing the changes that we want to see within the schools. And in particular, based on the results, there's really a sense of urgency for Richer Elementary, but really in particular, at Whitcomb Middle School, a sense of urgency to address and really look at what we need to change in special education at that school. So, what I recommend, and I do not take this recommendation lightly, I know that I'm, what I'm asking for is additional administrative support. And I'm coming from a district that we didn't have any administrative support. So, I do recognize that this is, is a difficult request when asking for it, and I don't ask, I'm not asking for it lightly, but I really do feel that we can better serve our students by shifting some salaries within our current budget. It wouldn't be any increase in budget, but we have vacancies with behavior techs and some paraprofessional positions within the district that aren't being, that are not filled right now and that are not required to provide IEP compliance for students. And I believe that we are better suited by closing those positions and taking that salary and putting it towards a .8 educational team leader position that wasn't, wasn't in the FY18 budget. And included in your packet is what the current structuring of the ETL assignments are and what I would like to move towards. So, currently, we have a, one, a full-time ETL that is split between the Early Childhood Center and Richer. But because of the caseloads between those two schools, we are currently contracting out with a .6 FTE, Retired Special Education Director, to help assist that educational team leader to provide additional relief and support in regards to the, running the team meetings and the paperwork between those two schools. We have a full-time educational team leader at Kane Elementary, that would remain the same. We have a full-time at Jarwick Elementary, that would remain the same. We have two and a half ETLs assigned currently at Whitcomb School. We have one and a half currently assigned at the high school, and we have a full-time that's split between Hildreth and out of district is the current assignments. With shifting, closing those positions and shifting those salaries to be able to support a full-time, a .8 ETL, we would be able to then have a .8 ETL at the Early Childhood Center. We'd have Richer and, a full-time at Richer, and that additional time would be to be able to spend towards those observations and really supervision and evaluation and restructuring some of the programs that we have there. Jarwick, as I said, would remain the same. Then, we would shift and do three full-time educational team leaders at Whitcomb School. And what that does is it brings those caseloads down to comparable to what the elementary educational team leaders have, and it will allow those administrators to be able to help and assist Brian Daniels and the assistant principals there and be able to make some significant changes. Then, we would end up having one and a half at the high school still, but the shift would be a transition instead of at Hildreth would be, it would be out of district and the high school. And then, as I said before, the Hildreth Director would be responsible. Moving forward, there'd be some transitions regarding those switches. So, those are my recommendations, and that is the, the transfer request that Mike Bergeron has regarding closing the three positions with the post, the job post numbers that he has on his transfers to close those and be able to shift towards that salary. Before I go on to the others, did you, should I ask any questions about that specifically?
Questions, Senate seat.
Thank you. Off the top of your head, and I know you might not have the exact numbers, but do you have approximations of caseloads by all of these sites?
We do.
Because that would be helpful.
Yes. So, originally, Jarwick was supposed to be 110, and Richer was supposed to be around 60, so we had anticipated about 50, 50 student difference. As of right now, Jarwick is approximately 100. There are some pending IEPs that, initial evals that were still waiting to be signed, so it will be slightly higher than that. Kane is approximately 90, and Richer is at, is at 75, and they have quite a few IEPs that are waiting to be signed, so we expect them shortly to be up to 86. So, between all three elementary schools, they're going to be within about 20 special education students of each other. Currently, Whitcomb is at about 250, and with unsigned IEPs, we're expecting it to be up to about 287 if the evaluations and initial evals are in process and the IEPs that were waiting to be signed. And then, the high school is at, is at approximately 130, and with some unsigned IEPs, initial evals, it's potentially at about 150. Early Childhood Center is at 77, and we will continue to get referrals from early intervention as children turn three. And out of district is at 66. There's 30, 30 at Hildreth.
So, clarity around the pending.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's not a set number, it's a, in the process and being evaluated. And I'm guessing with the IEPs, there's a full range of needs that can be encapsulated with the IEPs.
Right. You could have a speech-only up to, you know, a significant amount of pull-out services between those.
Right. But like, speech services, just as an example that you were bringing up, are we necessarily providing that within district? I mean, in some cases, I know previously we were having to bring in some consultants to support in some of these areas.
So, is your question with, with the pending ones, do we have enough support staff to be able to deliver the services?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So, we're not looking, then, of having to add any services or reach out for any additional consulting to support any of these IEPs?
The only area right now is speech and, speech and language, where we do have students, particularly at the high school, that are still getting direct services and that the IP teams are working towards having discussions around, does a student still benefit, educationally benefit from a pull-out speech service in missing an academic class? So, there's quite a few speech and language direct up at the high school that we're working through, and in the meantime, we are looking to support some overload at one of the elementary schools with two days of contracted services, but with the expectation of as student, as the caseload at the high school level starts to decrease going into next year, we don't see that being a long-term, you know, something that, for the spring, is needed, but we'll be able to fade that off.
Okay. So, you are heading towards my next question, which is, what are we looking at as far as aging out? Like, do we have some students that are then aging out at the high school?
We do, at the high school, there are, we've had one age out so far this year. I don't have specific numbers.
Yeah.
I do have the projections regarding all between in district and out of district. Presented a little bit more of the cost piece of it in Mr. Bergeron's report at the last school committee, but I can certainly get those numbers for you.
I think it just would be helpful, then, for planning purposes towards the budget, then?
Yes, I will, I, when we, when we get to budget, I will absolutely have all of that for you.
Yeah, because if we're looking at a decrease on some of them, my concern is that if we have an increase in IEPs, then we're just looking at rehiring, and we already have these other positions already in place.
Yep.
So, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about the McKinney-Vento kids. So, the money that follows them here, if they are assessed to need special education services, does that, does McKinney-Vento pay us more for that?
No. If, if students are enrolled in McKinney-Vento, if students are enrolled in Marlboro, we are programmatically and fiscally responsible for them, so we pay for their services. If a child becomes homeless, one area that, if, if they move to another district, they have the option of staying in Marlboro and continue to receive their, their education. But there's a cost share of transportation between our school district and wherever they are then temporarily housed. I do not believe, the only, if it's an out-of-district student, we do get more through circuit, circuit breaker for wards of states and things like that. But that's generally not a, a significant impact to the special education budget.
So, the majority of the money through McKinney-Vento really covers just transportation?
I, I believe so.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay. So, then, just the other quick updates that I had for you was that we're currently scheduling visits to alternative high schools. We are considering different models of schedules, course offerings, program models, and staffing with the goal of restructuring our alternative high school to improve attendance and graduation rates and decreasing the discipline and course failures. We're also in the process of initiating a program review by the Aspet Valley Collaborative in assisting with that, because we're also looking at our therapeutic programs or reestablishing our therapeutic programs up at Marlboro High School, and those are connected, so they're going to help us do a program review. We, there was a, a full program assessment back in 2008 by Walker, and so, they're going to, you know, look at that first and then come in and do some interviews and some observations and help us kind of have some guidelines as far as an outside look at that. Also, just as far as budget preparation, doing ongoing assessments of our out-of-district placements, looking at the use of our student-staff support, our special education teachers, related service provider schedules. We're looking to increase the efficiency and effectiveness of our staff and, and the service delivery to our students, and having discussions with administrators in the district around, around our models and looking at whether or not we want to move towards maybe some more certified teachers in place of some support staff, just depending on what the students' needs are, particularly if it's direct instruction around reading, math. So, we're looking at that. We've already completed a review, Mike Bergeron and I completed a review of our transportation costs and contracted services costs, so we'll be presenting those at, at budget presentations. And lastly, with the CPAC, we have held, CPAC has held an evening and morning meet-and-greet for parents to be able to meet with myself and the educational team leaders. That was held back at the start of October. There's also been a Parents' Rights Workshop that was held in November, and just this week, there was a social that, that CPAC had for special education parents from Marlboro. So far, attendance has been very low at the events held this year, and that's been, my understanding is that's been the same last year's, in last year's events as well. And so, in the future, I may be coming forward to the school committee with the recommendations on different options that we have as far as paperwork that we can submit to the Department of Ed regarding this requirement if we aren't showing that we have an active CPAC.
Any other questions, Senate seat?
Just one more clarifier, if I can. For Hildreth, do we have an understanding of an approximate amount of students that we have there? I'm just like, if I look at the caseload of 30, I'm just curious about.
There's about 60 students total, about half are special education?
Okay.
Thirty-eight on IEPs and 66 total.
Okay. So, 66 and 38.
Any other questions? Mr. Walters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jody, with respect to number four, the CPAC paragraph.
Sixty-six.
Do you need state approval to shut down a CPAC, or do you just need to give them notice that that's your intent?
So, so, it wouldn't be shutting down a CPAC. A school district is obligated to have, have CPAC as one of the functions. However, if, there's been many, many school districts who've struggled with having an active CPAC, and Dudley Charlton was, was one of them. It's, it's a lot of work to be able to organize and for, for the members of a CPAC. So, because of the number of districts that have struggled to maintain an active CPAC and it's a requirement, they do give, you can file for a waiver, and there's three different options going with that waiver. One of them being that the district will hold three parent, three parent workshops on a variety of different topics that have to do with disabilities. You can join and do a regional CPAC, and I can't remember what the third one was. In Dudley Charlton, we ended up doing workshops, because parents were really looking for that and really found that beneficial.
Would, would it be your intent or our intent to communicate whatever course of action we're contemplating to parents and students before we?
Yes, that would be part, yeah, all of that would be part.
Communication.
Yeah, that would all be part of, part of the process. Right now, just, you know, just in the first couple of months of school starting, I, it's just a red flag for me, looking at the attendance and communicating.
It strikes me as very low, right?
Yeah.
Which surprises, surprises me.
Given the numbers.
Right, right. There seems to be a dichotomy between the number of students and attendance at CPAC events. I'm surprised by your numbers, but just, but certainly.
Yep. And there could be, you know, low attendance for me, to be, can be a good sign, because, because if you have parents who are satisfied, then, then, and everything's going great, then it's, it's when you have a large, large number of parent, vocal parents who are unhappy, that's usually when you get an active CPAC, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Matthews?
Question regarding observation of other alternative schools.
Mm-hmm.
Are there, I don't know if you've started this or looked at it, are there other districts that have alternative middle school options as well? And would we?
That's something that.
Consider that, because I know, as, as we all know, that the wonderful teenage prepubescent, pubescent years are probably harder for some kids than even the high school years.
That is something that we are exploring. Currently, we, there had been a therapeutic classroom at the high school that isn't an option right now, so that's something that we're, we're looking to, to analyze. But then, at the middle school, we have a therapeutic classroom, but we don't have an in-district alternative. So, in exploring that, might be looking at seventh and eighth grade first, is so, and is it a possibility of, in the restructuring of Hildreth, can it be a seven through 12? What would be the entry and exit criteria and things like that?
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Motion for the acceptance of the minutes for November 14th.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve any discussion. CNN, all those in favor? Opposed, carries. Motion to accept the minutes of November 28th.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve any discussion. CNN, all those in favor? Opposed, carries. Public participation. Any public participation? Public participation. CNN, transfers FY18 budget.
Shall I take this as well, since I did so well with the other part of the financial?
You did such a great job, keep going.
I should have done this for calling. So, the transfers recommended by Mr. Bergeron and outlined, and I think the most important part is the outlining of the rationale that you just heard, is for requesting an additional .8 FTE, ETL to pay for this position, closing the following positions in the current budget and removing them permanently in the FY19 budget process. And they are par educator number 211, par educator number 865, and behavior tech 741.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve any discussion. Ms. Senate seat.
All right. I just want to make sure, though, from a clarity standpoint, that has, have this position, like specifically the par at Whitcomb, have we been down numbers and not filling this for a while? You know, I'm just curious.
We have some ETLs from Whitcomb here that might answer that, or Jody, I'm not exactly sure, but I don't think we're cutting a service off that's, no.
That one has been unfilled and is in, we have some moves.
I'm gonna have to ask you to come up. All our friends at home can hear you.
So that position had, has not been filled since beginning of the school year, and with the current personnel that we have at Whitcomb, we are able to provide.
Meet all the IEPs.
Yeah, meet all the IEPs. And there are some students that, that are moving, transferring out of district, but also across the district, we're working towards, all of the, all of the IEP teams are continuously looking to see where they can build independence with students and fading one-to-ones to two-to-ones and so on. So that's the goal as, as the year goes on, is to still have more wiggle room if a student transfers in, or you, or there's a need that does come up.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Acceptance of grants and donations. Hannifid Help School Programs, MHS, one thousand dollars.
Move to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Ohio Pile Prince, MHS, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
That's like the biggest one we've ever gotten from them?
It is.
That's a huge one for them. Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. McGraw-Hill District Wide, fifteen hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. National Geographic, Jerick Elementary School, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. My Research Institute, District Wide, twelve hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. MEF Grant Awards, the Danielle Mountains and Eric Casey at Whitcomb, five hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty cents. Susan Rosenthal, Richard School, twenty-one hundred, sixty-five dollars and two cents. Kelly Hall from Whitcomb School, sixteen hundred and twenty dollars.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Brigham Family Trust, Richard School, forty-five hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Reports of subcommittees. Mrs. Ryan.
Hello. Just wanted to update you all that the school building committee met last Monday and heard presentations from two potential model school designers, as well as presentation from the existing architect. And we visited one of the model schools in Athol, which is a re, how would you describe it? It's a modified version of a model school that was built by one of the architects. We had visited the other model school back in October. And all this is in an effort to kind of explore all options and find out what might suit our district best and to keep our costs down for the new school building as well. And the school building committee met last night to review our options, and more information to come on that at the next meeting. Did I cover it all?
Perfect.
Thank you. Any other reports of subcommittees? Seeing none, members forum. Any member who want to be formed? Ms. Bowden Hedinger.
It has come to our attention that our fearless leader, Mrs. Gruelock, is going to be leaving us after this year and retiring to move out of state. So we're all a little disappointed, but we knew it was coming eventually, so we are going to have to start the planning process for our next leader.
I think when, when we first sat down with Maureen way back at the beginning, she had asked for a two-year commitment. We just kind of ignored it and gave her a three-year contract, hoping that Fred decided he was gonna work an extra year, but he, he might pull back.
I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I.
No. So I mean, it wasn't.
Sorry.
We're just gonna guilt you until the day you walk out of this.
I'm sorry. No sign yet. Six months left to go.
Obviously, we're, we're in a better place today and want to thank you for your commitment to the community and the district, and, and we'll be working for the next seven months to make sure we have a great transition to continue going the way we're going.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah.
Happy Hanukkah tonight.
And happy holidays, a safe New Years', and we'll see you on the first.
Yes. Inauguration.
Whose great idea was that?
Some guy that started this whole thing a hundred.
Don't federal holidays overrule city charters?
Except that framing hymns during theirs on the first, too.
I know, I heard that, too. Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, opposed, carries. Thank you very much.